I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee on the evening of Monday, June 6th at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room and it is expected to be televised live. May I have the roll call, please? Ms. Barry here. Mr. Littieri.
Here.
Ms. Leonard here. Mr. Martucci.
Yep.
Ms. Petry here.
Yes.
Ms. Powell. Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Littieri, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment tonight? There are none. We have no delegates and visitors?
We do not.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2022?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Swol, second by Ms. Petry. Will you please call the roll? Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. Can I have a motion, please, to approve warrant SPW 22-21 in the amount of $200,342.05?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Littieri, second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please? Ms. Barry? Yes. Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. May I have a motion, please, for payroll warrant SPW 22-25 in the amount of $971,430.23?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Leonard, second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please? Ms. Barry? Yes. Ms. Littieri?
Abstain.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Abstain.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. I see no budget transfers tonight. We have Buildings and Grounds approval. I would ask that we can take these all together. The Ice Cream Social for the Arthur T. Cummings PTO, the Football Championship for the New England Youth Tackle Football, the Father's Day Pancake Breakfast, Winthrop Viking Football Boosters.
Those do approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Mr. Littieri. Is there any discussion? And all of their insurances and deposits are in place? Yes. May I have a roll call, please? Ms. Barry? Yes. Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell? Yes. We have no subcommittee reports tonight. We have a superintendent's report.
We do. Thank you very much. Very busy week here in the Winthrop Public Schools, last week and this week as well. We had the prom. Prom was amazing. We had promenade. I saw many folks there. It was, the paparazzi was out. We had parents lining up as early as, I think, 3:30 to get a good view for the 5:30 exit from the high school in which the students come down with whomever it is that they're going to the prom with, or if they're going alone to the prom, or single with groups of friends. And everyone looked amazing. They were very well behaved. They boarded their buses and went to the Hyatt. I was at a town council meeting until about 9 o'clock, 8:30, somewhere around there, and then was able to head over to the Hyatt to see the kids. By the time I got there, they went from looking very perfect to looking very sweaty, which is a good indication that they were having a lot of fun. One of the nice moments of the night is when I walked in, I saw some adults whom I didn't know. So I walked up to a couple of them, they had their Hyatt pins on, and just introduced myself and did what I usually do as a superintendent slash parent, and asked them, "How have the kids been?" And some of the comments, I actually wrote them down on a napkin in my car after I left. And the main manager of the prom from the Hyatt said, when I said, "How are they doing?" He said, "Your students are so well behaved. They're so polite. And we've had no problems, and we do a lot of functions here." So I said, "Okay, that's great." He was probably being really nice to me. So then I went over to the soda bar and I asked the soda bar attendant, "So, you know, I'm the school superintendent, just checking in on my kids, seeing how they've, you know, how they've been." He said, "You have the politest group of kids. More pleases and thank yous." He said, "They're so low-key." That's when I knew we were good. So I stayed for a little while longer with Mr. Cronby, talked to a few of the kids, and Mr. Capasso, and the rest of the staff. We had a lot of staff in and out that popped in just to say hello, which is nice, and the kids loved that. So they did a great job. And feedback from some of the kids that I was able to talk to that it was great, but it was long. It's funny, they want to be at the prom, but then all of a sudden, they figure out that, "Ooh, where am I going next?" The nice thing is, they have to get on the bus and we have to bring them back to the high school. And then they become the parents' responsibility after that. But no crazy stories afterwards, and so we were very happy about that. Graduation was Friday night. Lots of positive feedback, lots. Emails from folks, phone calls Mr. Cronby received, lots of happiness on the way out the door. I think people were amazed at the accomplishments of our kids and the places that they were going and the awards that they were getting. We had speeches, excellent speeches from Mia Martucci, Dan Trae, yeah, Daniel Tracy, not David Tracy, and Nora McCary. And so they got up and they were able to speak, and they spoke very well, which is really good for the people in the audience to hear how well-spoken and how comfortable our kids are at the microphone speaking to a whole host of people. I can tell you, when I first started speaking in public, I used to, my heart would race 100 miles an hour, I'd trip over my own words, and these students made it look easy. We were able to award many scholarships. We had class night, a couple of nights before in the Neil Shapiro Auditorium where we gave out scholarships under $1,000. And then at the graduation night, we gave out scholarships and awards, recognizing our kids' accomplishments for over $1,000. And that's inclusive of $240,000 worth of FASLAW scholarships. It's all, it's an anticipation for the kids in the graduating class. Nobody knows who's receiving a FASLAW scholarship. It's a very calculated process that involves writing an essay, submitting your, I think it's called the CFC? No, that's a grant. But the financial aid calculates income for families to see, you know, who really needs the monetary support. We also look at students' accomplishments in school, their GPA, and their community service. And that calculates who receives those scholarships. So I believe we gave $10,000 scholarships, I think we gave three $19,000 scholarships, two $23,000 scholarships, and a $25,000 scholarship. And what I liked about each one we gave out was looking at the audience of kids and how happy they were for each other. There was lots of applause and hooting and hollering appropriately for their friends. So that was great. Mr. Cronby's going to put together the list of colleges and universities, as well as career intentions and military plans for our students, so I'll have that for the next meeting, so folks can take a look at where our students were accepted and where they've decided to attend. Yes.
How much money altogether do we give out in scholarships, including the under $1,000?
Well, something that I do not retain in my file cabinet in my head, but it's-
Somewhere about $325,000 to $30,000.
On top of, not in addition to the FASLAW, that's with the FASLAW, correct?
With the FASLAW, yeah.
Everything.
And I think, we did have some questions around scholarships and how they're awarded. And not every scholarship is awarded by the faculty, so there's a subcommittee of people that determine some of the scholarships. There are some scholarships that families donate to the school, and it's an application process, and students have to fill out an application, and they determine which student is to receive that scholarship. So I'm glad you had that number in your head, because I did not. Quick budget update for this school year. We're closing out the 21-22 budget. Next school committee meeting, you'll be flooded with transfers. We need to wait to the end of the school year to transfer remaining funds to cover other funds, which is a usual and customary practice. Closing out purchase orders, we may have $10 left in a line item. However, we may be $10 short in another line item. So we'll be doing many of those transfers at the next meeting to balance out the budget. I think it's important to remember, this school year, although in terms of substitute needs was very, very high, however, we were able to use Massachusetts COVID Mask Connect to receive some funds for a window of time in which people had to submit paperwork. And that allowed the school district to recover a maximum of $850 or 40 hours of service, whichever came first. And we were, I believe I told you in a prior meeting, able to recover about $42,000 from the state. And that was sorely needed to offset our total amount of substitutes that we needed for the year. It wasn't all because of COVID, but that $42,000 in reimbursement was. We had a number of wonderful news reasons for people being out, and that was maternity leaves, lots of healthy babies born this year. So that was exciting. But all of those positions need to be covered during the school year. So we are working on continuing to cover those line items. If you see in your, what do we call it? The-
Expenditure report.
Expenditure report. In your expenditure report, you'll see some line items have not been used yet. We pay attention to that all school year, knowing that we may, in fact, have to cover some of these overages. It's an unusual year for the substitute line items to be that high, but it's expected with, between COVID and the number of pregnancies that we've had. Let me see what else. So moving forward for next year's budget, which is an ongoing process starting in about November of every year, and we're still at it, we are anticipating the town council to take a vote on the school, their vote for the appropriation of the monies coming to the school. We expect that vote to be this Tuesday. We expect to receive an appropriation somewhere around the figure of $23,742,750. That is $500,000 over the full appropriation for this last school year. Last school year, we received $22,842,750,000. However, we received an additional $400,000 in APRA fundings. And when I say last school year, I'm actually referring to the year that we're in right now. We received an additional $400,000 of one-time money in APRA funds, which brought that total appropriation up to $23,292,750. That additional APRA funding funded teachers, first and the second grade teacher, a reading specialist, an SEL, a social-emotional learning teacher, a part-time custodian, and two additional adjustment counselors. That appropriate, those additional positions were put in place out of need for mitigating the impacts of COVID. That's not, that's not the extensive list of the additional staff members we put in place this year, but it is what that additional $400,000 covered for the school year. That $400,000 was one-time funding, and we were aware of that. However, we needed those positions to help begin the process of mitigating learning loss and impacts of COVID. I think it's important to note, and I'll probably say it twice in this report, we are well aware that it is not one-year, not a one-year recovery for our students or our staff in terms of the impacts that COVID has had upon the district as a whole. So the town's appropriation of this current school year did not include $172,056 in S.R. II funding, which we used on top of the $400 for the hiring of an additional nurse, two CNAs, a custodian, and two academic support teachers. And all of these, all of those positions were funded out of an S.R. II grant, which was again a one-year COVID-related grant funding from the state, which S.R. II is gone at the end of this year. And again, it was, those positions were put in place to begin the process of mitigating those impacts. On top of that, this current school year, we used $2,188,866 in additional grant funding. So I've talked about the town's appropriation, the $400,000 additional money in APRA funding, and then an additional $2,186,866 in additional grants to fund positions and expenses for a total operating budget of $25,653,672. When you look at the Department of Education's website, and I think Mr. Littieri and I talked about this this week, the total operating budget that helps determine Chapter 70 returns for us does not include grant funding. So if you look at that, it may show an operating budget of $21 million, which is not a true reflection of the amount of money the public school spends. And it's a note to self that placing staff and salaries in grants is not overly helpful for your Chapter 70 reimbursement. However, when you have no place else to go and you need the people to do the work, you have to place them in the grant funding that you have available. But I do think that's an important clarifying note, and we have now changed our budget presentation that you see for the 22-23 school year to reflect everybody, every person that is embedded in either a grant. Typically, you would just see what was in the schools, the town's appropriated budget, and some of the grants, some of the, what we call entitlement grants, that typically stay the same, such as the special ed entitlement grants. If you compare this year's budget to next year's presented budget that I, needs-based budget that I gave you, you see more bodies than you saw the year before, but that doesn't, and there are some, but that doesn't necessarily mean that all those bodies didn't exist. But in prior budgets, we were, we did not list those. So for transparency purposes and for the community and for the teachers to understand the total amount of money that we spend on education here in Winthrop, I felt strongly that that needed to be very clear to people, so that you could see how much money and how many bodies do we actually have. So in that budget, you'll see every body that exists, and you see, every position that exists, and you'll see where they were funded. Either LEA, which is the local education budget, which is the money that comes from the town. You'll also see every grant that we use to put a teaching position in, as well as the majority of the expenses, because we can also charge programs or curriculum to grants as well. Here in Winthrop, most of, the majority of our grants are about 80% salary, which leaves very little wiggle room for additional expenses. So, moving on. Where did I land? I am right here. So like I said, we also, last, this current school year, used an additional $2,188,866 for those grants, for that total operating budget of $25,653,672. We do anticipate a reduction in grant funding overall for the school district for next fiscal year in the amount of about $702,449,000. And why is that? Because the one-time COVID funding, S.R. I, S.R. II, the CFCR grants, the $400 appropriation from the town, those were one-time funding sources that are going away. Now, all of those grants didn't only support teaching positions, the APRA funding and the COVID funding did a lot more. We've talked about that in other budget subcommittee meetings. And one-time funding, things like repairing things in the schools that needed to be repaired, putting new filtration systems in, putting MIR-15 filters in, furniture, everything related to COVID over the past two years, we have tied to grants as much as we could, knowing that those grants were going to go away. Desperate times call for desperate measures, and at points in times, we had to put bodies, teaching bodies and support staff in those. So it should be, and I said I was going to say this more than once, it should be understood that the impacts of the pandemic on students and staff cannot be mitigated in one year. We anticipate it's going to take several years to regain the impacts of interrupted learning and the social-emotional trauma resulting from the pandemic. Thus, the reduction in grant funding available next year may not allow us to maintain the same level of services and positions that we have this year, based on a bunch of different factors. You have to have the funds available to pay the total amount of staff that you have. So moving into the 22-23 school year, we will be maintaining, at this point, $391,197 worth of staff that were originally funded by the APRA funding and the one-time S.R. II funding. And the way that we will do that is we will be charging that, some of that amount of money to S.R. III grant, and then there are additional items that are in that S.R. III grant. But we do not have, at this point in time, the funding to charge the entire amount of grants that we did before. As I told you, we're close to about a $700,000 reduction. So those additional positions will be funded by S.R. III, and that particular S.R. III funding source was different than S.R. I and S.R. II, which was just deposited in a bank account for the town of Winthrop. S.R. III, we actually had to write for. So the total amount of money that we were given from the state, we had to target that money and have that approved. So write to the Department of Education in a very multi-tiered document, what do you plan to do with this funding over the next two school years, this year and, I'm sorry, next year and the year after? And not only did you have to tell them how you were going to do it, you had to poll parents, you had to do surveys, which we did, you had to find, you had to prove to the Department of Education that that spending could be maintained three years from now. And that's nice, and we hope that we can maintain it three years from now. And in doing that, we also could do a lot of one-time funding sources, and technology was a big one. We have a relatively large infrastructure issue with technology in the town in terms of the amount of megabytes and the end life of the servers at the middle school, high school. Some of those are coming to an end life. And we had to untangle the fiber. Right now, everything goes, anything at the middle school, high school, or Gorman Fort Bank School originates at the Cummings School and gets filtered through and pushed out to the other schools. We are, according to the technology people that came out and did the assessment, we have gone well beyond our lifespan of that not creating a major issue for the sustainability of the total amount of technology we have, which has probably tripled in the past three years. So in order to maintain what we have purchased and invested in, we have to invest in the infrastructure. So the S.R. III grant is going to be covering a lot of that work that will be being done by cable, the cabling that will be being done by Comcast, and then Balsam Technology will be doing the actual server upgrades at the middle school, high school. And hopefully, will now be on separate systems. Middle school, high school will be living on its own, and then the Cummings and the Fort will be able to be handled through that routing without any further interruption. I'm happy that we have not, knock on wood, crashed as of yet, and this, this work is being done in the summer, so as not to impact. It's about a two-day shutdown, and they'll start on a Friday. So the town, at this point in the budget process, we're anticipating an overall budget. Remember, it's different than it has been in the past, because we're including absolutely everything. A total operating budget of $26,879,22, and that's $21,113, no, $21,113,180 in salaries, and $4,974, $4,974,742 in expenses. The town, and that, the town allocation of $23,742,750, if that is what we receive on Tuesday, coupled with $1,658,413 worth of various grant funding, leaves us in the moment with a projected deficit of $686,759,000 to open up the school year. So what does that mean? That means that that amount of money is, is, we need to create that amount of money, either through grant funding sources or reducing line items in our budget, or looking at other accounts that we have, such as Circuit Breaker. So we're planning, at this point, and it's a delicate balance, because we need to get to the end of this year and close this year out before we know what the town council's giving us as well, before we can really start to go after the different line items and see what we can do without next year, or where we had a little extra money this year in a line item, that we may be able to reduce that line item for next year to an actual. So we're planning to offset the deficit gap by, prior to the opening, by allocating the remainder of the FY '22 Circuit Breaker reimbursement fund. So that's money that's in a bank account for students who were out of district last year, and that money has come in. We hold on to that money to make sure that we don't have any deficits in special education, any aspect of special education. It can be staffing, it can be transportation, but primarily, we use it for tuitions. So the goal is to allocate an amount of money to offset the $686,000 deficit from Circuit Breaker. I anticipate that will be close to $400 and change, $400,000 and change. And potentially, if there are funds left at the end of the school year, and we believe that it will be minimal, but we'll be able to prepay tuitions, which is a legal practice. So when you think, what does that mean? If we're over $686, and we can allocate Circuit Breaker funds and get that down to the $300,000 mark, if we can prepay tuitions at a private special ed school, which is absolutely legal, you can pay three months of a private day school, and you can pay a full year of a collaborative. Not best practice to pay a full year, because we don't know if the kids are going to move. However, that would also lower that deficit. So at the mo, this moment in time, I'm not confident that that will close that full gap, but that's what we are working on in the moment, because we will need to be able to have the school committee at the next meeting re-vote the budget after the town council gives us our allocation, and after I revise the full budget, because it will be a little bit different looking than the budget that you originally voted. So that will come back to you for a final vote, so that we can open the door. And again, it's a work in progress, so more, additional information will be coming your way over the next week and a half to two weeks. Last thing is, just an update on negotiations. We're in the process, as you-
Can I, I'm sorry. Can I just have a question on the budget before we move on? When you are talking about the $600,000 deficit, to clarify, that's under level services for this year.
So just if we maintain everything as it is now- Correct.
Correct.
We're, we are $600,000, there's a $600,000 gap.
Correct. So right-
That's not including any of the advanced stuff that we had wanted, would like to do-
In the needs-based, in the needs-based budget, so that, no. That, the needs-based budget, we would be, and I'd have to go back and look, but I think we'd be about 1.7 in deficit for a needs-based budget, which unfortunately, I'm getting very used to, creating a needs-based budget and then putting it back on the shelf to collect dust. Because year after year after year, we tell the story of the needs-based budget, and we talk to people about what we need in order to move the school district forward with the initiatives that we want in our strategic plan, and unfortunately, overall, there isn't a capacity to provide us with that level of funding.
Yes.
And so does, and so I think you've said this before, but this means we've asked for a needs-based budget for three years.
Five, since I've been here.
Oh, five, but-
Four, actually, four.
Four, yeah, four, okay. I was looking at it, it's four. But we've never gotten it.
Correct.
So, but some of those, that, some of the issues we put in a needs-based budget four years ago now become, they move up the chain to-
A level service, a level-
-a level service, because we can't do without them.
Correct.
Right? So, so that means that, so we end up growing the deficit every year for what we actually need to do.
Yes.
That is correct.
Sure, I, sure, I understood it last year. I understand it even better this year.
But I do think it's important, knowing, and there is no blame on anybody. We know the financial situation of the town, and we do not want to set ourselves in a position where we're fighting for police and, against the police, the fire, and the DPW for money. We have one town. And I can tell you that I sit at town finance subcommittee meetings, and I sit at town council meetings, or at least watch them from my living room, and have looked at their budget closely, and really feel as though I have a handle on that budget. The town has been extremely open with me and supportive and understanding that I go through this process of telling people what we need. And I do it because I think the kids deserve my advocacy to talk about the school district and how we want to move forward to be on the same level playing field as other schools around us, knowing very well that we do not have the funding resources of other schools around us. Even grant funding is dramatically different in the town of Winthrop than it is in Everett, Revere, Chelsea. You know, the five district partnership, if we wanna stay in that group or if you wanna sail off to Hudson, you know, and look at their budget. We're an oddity in terms of what we get based on the economic status of our community, our location. Um, and some of the reasons, I don't know why. If you think about the chapter sev, increase in chapter seventy, can, all the surrounding communities got millions of dollars, millions. And the town of Winthrop got one million that won't be realized till over, I believe it's, I believe it's five years. So where a place like Revere may be getting an increase in chapter seventy that's twenty two million next year, our increase that we will see on the books in the town of Winthrop is about sixty nine thousand. So there's a dramatic difference. So we, we try to compare apples to apples when we're looking at funding, but for whatever the reason, the location that we're in. And we continuously advocate it to Representative Turco, to the State House for additional funding, uh, and continue to look at grants. Uh, sometimes a five thousand dollar grant that's available might take somebody sixty hours to manage. So is it, it's, it's not worth getting that five thousand dollar grant for the amount of time that it takes to manage it. Um, so, any other questions on the budget?
Any questions? No, thank you.
So I expect to come back to you, um, I'll, I know pretty confident that the town, we had a great FinCom meeting, uh, one of the, one of the best I've ever seen. The Finance Commission came to the town council for a separate meeting. And they did a, uh, what I would say is a deep dive into the town's current, uh, financial status. And this is a group of people that are not voted in, um, they're not looking for anybody to pat them on the back. They are volunteer people who come in, um, with a lot of skill and really dive deeply into what the town has, separate from the town council. And then comes back to the town council and makes recommendations about what they should do moving forward. I sat in on that meeting for two hours, um, and I was extremely clear on what the potential of the town has in terms of how much money they can give each department. I feel it was a very fair representation of the Finance Commission. I don't think they favored one group over another. Um, they listened to each one of us, I met with them separately and told them what we needed for a needs-based budget. I told them what a level service budget would do for us and how would we, would potentially be in the hole even with a level service budget. You know, depending upon the town's allocation, um, and I think it was extremely clear. I believe it's a document that people can, can see, uh, at this point in time. But they didn't leave one stone unturned and they actually recommended some strategic planning for the town that will support the town and help the town moving forward with the new town manager. So that was extremely helpful. Just an update on negotiations, as you all know, we're in the process of negotiating, uh, seven different unions. We believe have had four of the seven, um, we've had meetings with the teachers, with the E S Ps, with the secretaries and the nurses. We, uh, also are looking for dates for the custodians, the cafeteria workers and the s, uh, school administrators, which are comprised of assistant, assistant principals, I was gonna say assistant superintendents, but I don't have one of those. Assistant principals and, um, special education chair people, so we're getting some dates on the book for, for them. We have had seven, I believe, tomorrow will be eight, our eighth meeting with the teachers union, um, most. Uh, so those, those union contracts, most do not expire until the end of August, August thirty first is the expiration date on those. I believe the negotiations, in my mind, have been productive, um, and we're, and progressing, which is important. Um, lots of good conversation, uh, had between both parties. We'll have our eighth negotiation session tomorrow night, um, and our hope, uh, is that we continue, uh, to negotiate and have a contract settled ideally before or upon August thirty first. Um, that will depend upon how, how much further we progress in the next, uh, several meetings. So I don't know if any, that was my superintendent's report for today. I don't know if you have any questions, uh, regarding negotiations or the amazing job that our senior class has done.
Any questions? Seeing, now, do we have, um, homeschool applications?
We do not.
Okay, uh, we have no appointments, we have resignations?
We have, uh, we do, we have no appointments and I wanna just let you know why. Uh, until the budget is settled, we've had a number of teachers resign, as you know, so you might be thinking, what are you doing with all these people? In good faith, um, I wish they stayed to hear this, but in good faith, um, I cannot sign a letter of intent or, or contract letter of hire. The contract is the contract, so the teachers don't get a, a multi-page document when they sign on with the school district. We give them a letter of, uh, intent, which says, we intend to employ you beginning the first day of school. I do not feel comfortable, um, going through that process yet because of the gap that we need to close in next year's budget. So although we've interviewed for many of those positions in which people have resigned, uh, we have not technically filled them, uh, in, in good faith. Because I don't wanna fill a position and then tell somebody, I'm sorry, we can't, we have to reneg on that. So we'll hold off on that until, um, we have the town council vote and until the budget gap is closed. Um, and hopefully that will be within the next few weeks. Resignations, Taylor Murphy, second grade teacher, excellent teacher, is taking, um, a year to travel. And Diane Duplin, an E S P, uh, has submitted her resignation as well. We have no new retirements and for postings, we are posting a computer teacher for grades three to five, a special ed teacher at, at the Cummings, computer teacher at the Cummings grades three to five, a special ed teacher at the middle school, a grade three teacher at the Cummings. Our summer positions, um, are still being posted and we have no leaves of absence at this time.
Okay, um, we have a retirement resolutions for the twenty twenty two retirees. Um, Patty, would you, can you read that resignation, are we, I'm sorry, can you read the resolution?
Yep, um, so the retirees this year are, uh, Raina Aronson, Bernadette Casely, Marie Finn, Michael Kirby, and Mara Sullivan. Um, we gave Susan Eccles her citation at a meeting in December, um, or, uh, no September, I'm sorry. So, um, this is just a sample, uh, whereas Marie Finn has completed forty two years of service to the students of Winthrop. And Marie Finn has been a devoted and loyal friend and colleague. And Marie Finn has had a strong positive impact on scores of Winthrop students through her display of genuine concern for young peo, people. Therefore, therefore be it that the school committee of the town of Winthrop expresses its congratulations and best wishes and that it is made part of the official minutes of the Winthrop School Committee on June sixth, two thousand twenty two. And these will be given to them at the, uh, W T A retirement party Friday.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Um, motion by Lynn Petry and second by Mr. Letery. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have, um, a vote, I need a motion on the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school committee dates.
Most do approve.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for the disposal of textbooks? This is a vote to declare the textbooks as surplus and turn them over to the town to be disposed of.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Petry. Any discussion?
Hi, sorry, I, can I ask a question? Would it, would it disposed of, how are the books being disposed of? Are they being redistributed or are they just being recycled?
I can answer that, so they're, they're very outdated, um, books that the principals have gone through. Um, I don't believe they're of any, um, use to any other district because they are so outdated. Um, the social studies textbooks.
The textbooks, okay.
And teacher additions and Storytown, the initial version of Storytown, which has been significantly, um, updated in, in. You know, I think they're two thou, I wanna say they're two thousand and ten or two thousand and eight Storytown books. Uh, and you, you can't just toss to, textbooks away, you have to have school committee, uh, approval, uh, to get rid of those texts.
Got it.
Any other discussion? May I have a roll call?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Um, I see no unfinished business, we have public relations.
Do you want me to read them?
Yes.
So just quickly, the drama, middle school drama is performing through the looking glass Friday the tenth and Saturday the eleventh at seven o'clock at the Neil Shapiro Center. Uh, tickets can be purchased at the door. Mia Martucci surpassed one hundred points and one hundred gold milestone for girls lacrosse, becoming only the fir, fourth girl in Winthrop Public Schools history, or Winthrop High School history to do so. Gymnastics superstar, Brandy De Chico completed, competed at the Nationals in Fort Myers for Team Massachusetts and won the event. Track star Nick Capuccio completed in the Northeast Conference Championship in PBD. He won the two hundred meter race at the N E C Championship Conference. He completed in states and came in fifth for the two hundred meter, fifteenth for the hundred with a time of eleven point six eight. And he came in sixth in the long jump. Track star Sophia Munson is seeded forty four out of sixty five after earning a time of eleven point three nine at the Northeast Conference Championship. She completed, competed in the states and placed twenty four out of a hundred with a time of thirteen, uh, point five four. Congratulations to Mia Martucci again in summer talent, they were the recipients of the M I A A Girls and Women's Sports Award. We won't talk about the bus on the way there. Congratulations also to Colin Kinsella, uh, baseball all-conference, Pete Silverman, baseball all-star, Mia Martucci, lacrosse all-conference, Emma Holmes, lacrosse all-star, Ryan Cifory, tennis all-star, J D Parker, tennis all-star, Kendall Brandt, tennis all-star, and Mia Ivenis, tennis all-star. The Winthrop High School Viking Cheer Team is hosting a Viking Chair Camp Monday, June thirteenth, uh, through Wednesday, June fifteenth at the Winthrop High School Gymnasium for students in kindergarten through grade eight. You can email, um, Mr. Serino for more information or the W H S Vikings Chair Team at gmail dot com. That will be on our website. The Class of twenty twenty four is having a bake sale Saturday, June eleventh from ten to twelve at Michael's Mall. The Winthrop High School tennis courts were rededicated, um, as the Wallace B. McLean Tennis Courts. Mr. McLean was a science, uh, and, let me see, was a science teacher and a driver safety teacher for Winthrop High School in the mid nineteen fifties. And the annual Father's Day breakfast is back, sponsored by the Winthrop Football Boosters Club, great event, and hosted by the High School Vikings Football Team. It'll be held in the high school cafeteria from seven to one o'clock on Father's Day, so please attend. That's one of their bigger fundraises if you can. And that is it for public relations.
Anything to add? Anything to add?
Yes, um, again, the graduation was an incredible event, congratulations to all the seniors. We talked about the scholarships a little earlier and the amount of money that is given out and it's, obviously the facella speaks for itself, the amount of money that, um, that's given out every, every year, about a quarter of a million dollars. But it's all the other scholarships too, there were over fifty, uh, there were, I think, exactly fifty scholarships given out on graduation night of at least a thousand dollars. And there were many, many given out on, um, class night. And all the families and organizations that sponsor those, um, scholarships, uh, it's incredibly rewarding for the kids and, um, and I thank them for all their efforts. And the council will be voting tomorrow night in a budget and, um, you know, there are structural deficits in the town budget and in the school budget, which we need to address and we will address and, uh, look forward to having those discussions. Thank you.
Um, I, and I will add that the National Honors Society is working with Mia Moray to hold a fundraiser at La Siesta on Wednesday. That is dine-in, takeout, proceeds will go to help struggling families in town and there will also be raffles as part of that.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Martucci, motion and seconded by, Ms. Petry's already got it. Any discussion, oh, we don't discuss that, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Letery?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.